And we are ready, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call the September 12th regular Seward City Council meeting in order. If the Deputy Chief could leave us in the fledge, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Tonight's roll call. Wells is excused. Osanga?
Here.
Demoss?
Here.
McClure?
Here.
Casagrande?
Here.
Calhoun?
Here.
Madam Mayor Terry?
Yes.
You have a forum.
Thanks. Before the next item, what a joy to see everyone here today. Welcome. Citizen comments on any subject except those items scheduled for public hearing. Those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. Time is limited to 30 minutes per speaker, 36 minutes total time on the agenda. And if, oh, 30 minutes? Three minutes! See, I'm just so happy to see you all. Three minutes each, and yeah, inside or outside city limits. Madam Clerk?
Yes, the first person signed in is Greg Cox.
See, you should have just not corrected me. And then...
I can't speak.
Yeah. Welcome, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to start off by thanking each one of you for continuing to come out all summer long, especially as we're getting into the transition season with the weather and whatnot. It's great to know that leadership and admin is putting time into helping Seward. So, thank you very much. I come with a notion to talk about the community center predominantly that tomorrow night, we're hosting a community center social out at the Resurrection Roadhouse. They are our hosts. So, everyone is invited, folks who have ideas, folks who just want to talk about it, hear ideas. We're going to have whiteboards up all around the room, a chance to, with Sharpies, to write up some things. The point is to be as inclusive as possible, so if you're available, please come. And for folks who are also very passionate about helping Seward be a year-round community, that's very important to me. So, what I came with a move of alliteration is that the notion of a community center will bring significant challenges, but also through coordination, cooperation, communication, I think we can overcome those. I have spent the better part of the summer kind of head in the ground, working on my new business, but also knowing and trying to use those opportunities to hear from folks in the community, knowing that with a little bit of compromise, we can bring together an opportunity to improve the services for our vulnerable populations, for our youth and our elders. Now, it was about a year ago that you elected me to come and speak on it then, and in that year, I want to again thank you all for your effort to get us to where we're at now. I know that the city admin is working very closely with VICTUS Consultants, and we have a brief coming up on the 28th. And that's one of the reasons why tomorrow night's community center social is so important, to hear what the questions are, because folks outside of this room don't know really what the survey produced, other than a lot of good turnout from folks inside and outside of city limits. I've also had a chance, though, to talk to a lot of people about the ambitions that we have, and I've gone on my way to talk to people who casually prefer to them as maybe some wet blankets, some folks that might be concerned about the financial costs, folks that maybe still know the history of how city invested in and built a new library. And those are valid concerns, and those folks who have helped educate me at some of the history of going on here. But it also scares me a little bit out of my depth when I talk to those folks, and that's why I come to you very humble and hoping that folks can continue to advocate for what will help Seward be a year-round community. There was a year ago, I wanted to quote a newspaper passage, one of the city council candidates quoted saying, "This town never used to shut down in the winter. Everything was open year-round." Of course, maybe there's many, not as many B&amp;Bs, but a big difference, and I think it's something that has to change. And that became motivation for me. That was something that I saw someone who wanted to take a leadership position, and I wanted to be in the community, helping to make a difference. I also started the question when I went into this thing, "What else is going on in town that's going to help make Seward a better year-round community? Please let me know." And in a year, no one has given me anything that makes me want to take the backseat to them. So, as we're working, please share your ideas. Please come, and I look forward to chatting with folks tomorrow night. Thank you very much. In three minutes. I think you all will be doing very well.
Anyone else signed in, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Next is Bradus.
Oh, five to eight.
Okay.
It'll be short. Hi, I'm Bradus O'Naiter of the city limits, and I'm here in support of, I heard that the city of council was looking at starting to sell property across the bay. I could tell you, the years I've been up here, I've often thought, it's kind of an irritation. If the city needed more money, they always look at more taxes, taxing the people that live here. I thought, with all that property over there, why not sell some of it? I think the realtors would probably be pro that, to get that sold, because they have the market for it, and they have their finger on the pulse. But that being said, that's mainly why I'm here, to state that I support that idea. And I'd like to point out one other thing. Take a Danwell who's done some expansion here, and we've driven over that area, and where would you start? Well, I'd start personally where I'm going to propose to buy, purchase some property over there, but really, the best location for starting would be at the south end. And if you're, I'm saying this so that when you're out driving around, you might go take a look at it yourself and see what, how would you get up there and start? Start getting up there. You don't have to, something like the whole darn hillside, but you've got to start somewhere. That being said, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else signed in?
Yes. Next is Carol Griswold.
Carol Griswold, Inside City Limits. I appreciate your support of the reconsideration of ordinance 10 and 11. Ordinance 10 should at minimum increase fines for potentially lethal and dangerous violations for hunting, trapping, discharge of firearms, and explosives. Ordinance 11 should at minimum codify adequate time for council and the public to receive the packet, not as late as Saturday at 7:00 p.m. for council, or 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting for the public. Other changes addressed previously are needed for both ordinances. Take your time and do it right. Resolution 97, the replat and rezone of Forest Acres Campground and Bike Park. This resolution is confusing as it references a rezone and replat of the campground without any supporting material, but means the bike park. The draft unit plan has not yet been approved by PMZ or council. The bike park rezone and replat is also premature. There's no rush to divide the campground from the bike park or rezone the bike park. Postpone the replat and rezone until the fate of the Forest Acres campground is decided. Then both parcels can be surveyed, replatted, and rezoned. Please remove this from the consent agenda and postpone. Resolution 101, 10, no, $100,000 for holiday decorations with a vague intent to encourage winter tourism, increase winter commerce, and community activities. There are no details in how this money will be spent, or what needs are to improve or replace existing holiday decorations. There are many other pressing unfunded needs that should be addressed before the city blows $100,000 on decorations. Please remove from the consent agenda and vote no or amend. Ordinance 14, Exit Glacier Guide's Parking Lot Rezone. If anyone has paid attention, the parking lot at Second Avenue is well-used by the owners, staff, and clients, and is needed. Even with the parking lot, staff still park along Second Avenue, creating friction and congestion. The applicant stated that people exploring the harbor and eating at Red's are using this parking lot, which is not true. During peak season, it is often difficult to find a city parking lot space convenient to this business. The loss of this parking lot in a rezoned auto commercial will have a negative impact on the surrounding residential neighborhood. It is not in the public's best interest. Thank you.
Excuse me. Madam Mayor, the last signed in is Tim McDonald.
Tim McDonald, Mile 2 Nash Road, Inside City Limits. I want to talk about the utility, the electricity utility, the proposed sale. I think it's extremely important. And during the earlier special meeting, I think I made some of the council members mad, and that's good. Maybe we'll get some intelligent discussion going about it, because that's what we need. It's very important. And to me, it feels like the decision's already been made. You know, everybody's already talking about a sale and talking about Chugatch or Homer or whatever. I thought we were just going to talk about it a month ago when it came up. And as far as I'm concerned, that utility belongs to the customers. They've paid for it several times over, and it's always been used as a cash cow. I know more than once that the shipyard or the, you know, the SMIC enterprise fund has owed the electricity utility millions of dollars. It was a grab bag where they could cover everything else out of that, so it's always been a profit center. Now, it's been loaded down with debt, and we want to sell it. Like I said, it feels like a setup to me. I think that we should have an advisory vote all the way out to Mile 25, whatever the limits are of the customers, and it should be a sell, don't sell, or co-op to the users for a dollar with no debt. That's what we deserve. We deserve a chance to do it ourselves, and it's a very important issue, whether it makes anybody mad or not, or they think anybody else has any right talking about it or not. We need to get it out of here, lay it on the table, and dissect it. This is the one part of government that affects every single person every day, because we all use electricity all day long. So, I don't think the city has the right to sell it out from under the customers. The customers own it, the city doesn't own it. And said, without an advisory vote of all the people, I don't think anything should be done, and it just feels like a setup already, the decision's already been made, and I'm vehemently against that. Let the customers decide. It was originally conceived by an individual. Mr. Estes started it and ran it for years. They had the power station up the canyon by Mount Marathon, and then they sold it to the city. Let's give it back to the people instead of sending it to conglomerates. At least with us, we've got a chance to try a few things that the city's had years to do and has never done. So, advisory vote, everybody, co-op. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Here, you can see none. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Do I have a motion and a second?
I move for the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda.
I move second.
I have three items to add to the agenda. Under Proclamations and Awards, we're going to add a Day to Remember proclamation, we're going to add the POW MIA Recognition Day proclamation, and also the American Legion Day proclamation. And then I was going to add Resolution 2022-102 to the consent agenda unless there's any objections. And...
No?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any objections?
No.
Okay, thank you. You, you're up.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to pull Resolution 2022-097 from the consent agenda. I'd also like to pull Resolution 2022-010 from the consent agenda.
1001?
101, sorry.
Yep, thank you. Anything else? Any other changes to the, did that cover everyone? Madam Clerk, did you get those changes?
I do.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Let's call for a vote, please.
Voting on the approval of tonight's agenda and consent agenda as amended, Calhoun?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Demoss?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Your agenda and consent agenda are approved, and approved on tonight's consent agenda, the introduction of ordinance 2022-014, amending the land use plan and rezoning lots 21 through 23, Block 10 of original town site of Seward Lobner addition, with the physical address of 1104 and 1100 Second Avenue from urban residential zoning district to auto commercial zoning district. Resolution 2022-098, accepting and appropriating community assistance program funds in the amount of $136,622.12 for the purpose of capital projects related to fire, public safety, and road maintenance. Resolution 2022-099, authorizing the city manager to execute change order number four with Coldfoot Environmental Services Incorporated for additional mitigation of the Jesse Lee Home property in an amount not to exceed $211,651.92 in appropriating funds. Resolution 2022-100, approving the city's participation in the borough-wide Safe Streets and Roads for All Grants and appropriating funds in the amount not to exceed $10,541. Resolution 2022-102, accepting the city manager's recommendation to approve the Harmon Construction Developer Incentive and Reimbursement Program application with 50% reimbursement of the water, sewer, and electrical improvements in an estimated amount of $161,565 in appropriating funds. You have approved the August 22nd, 2022, city council special meeting minutes, the August 22nd, 2022, city council regular meeting minutes. You have approved Action Memorandum 2022-007 to authorize the city manager to separate the single audit portion of fiscal year 2022 ACFR from the financial statement portion of the ACFR, and issue two separate reports. Action Memorandum 2022-008, you have authorized the city manager to purchase a new Volvo L98 wheeled loader from Construction Machinery Industrial LLC to replace a 2,000 Volvo L7D loader in the amount of $219,440 plus 10% contingency for a total amount not to exceed $241,384 utilizing RFP contract number 032119-VCE. You have approved the guidelines for writing candidates for the October 4th, 2022 regular municipal election, and you have appointed Sean Alman to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire February 2025. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is special orders, presentations, and reports. This first one is for Rail Safety Week. Whereas the Alaska Railroad Corporation holds safety as a fundamental value and partners with Operation Lifesaver Nationwide Rail Safety Education Program, and whereas Operation Lifesaver is the foremost public information and education program dedicated to preventing highway, rail, brake, crossing, crashes, and pedestrian railroad trespass incidences, wherever, whereas every three hours, a person or vehicle is hit by a train in the U.S., whereas highway-grade crossings, crashes during 2021 resulted in 2,147 collisions, 236 persons killed, and another 666 injuries nationwide, and whereas highway-grade crossing crashes are more severe than highway collisions and are more likely to result in death and injury, whereas collisions between trains and motor vehicles or pedestrians can be prevented by increasing public awareness of the dangers at crossing around railroad property and at the appropriate safety laws, including observing right-of-ways, and whereas during Rail Safety Week, September 19th to 25th, and throughout the year, all citizens are encouraged to observe additional caution as motorists or pedestrians near tracks or trains. See tracks, think train. And this important observance will lead to greater safety awareness and reduction in highway-grade crossing crashes and pedestrian rail incidents for all of Alaska. Now therefore, I, Kristi Terry, Mayor of the city of Seward, do hereby proclaim September 19th through 25th Rail Safety Week, and encourage all citizens to see tracks, think train, to reduce crossing crashes and pedestrian railroad trespass incidences during this week and throughout the year. The next one is Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is dead, sorry, detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people each and every year, and whereas one in five of our nation's children loses their battle with cancer. Many infants, infants, children, and teens will suffer the long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas the Kids Cancer Connection, American Cancer Fund for Children, and Alliance Clubs International, along with the philanthropic wings of the Max Factor Cosmetic Family, are dedicated to helping these children and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patients, services to children undergoing cancer treatment at the Children's Hospital at Providence, Alaska Medical Center in Anchorage, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsors toy distributions, family sailing programs, pet assistance therapy, laughter as healing events, supercar experience, positive appearance programs, educational programs, and hospital celebrations in honors of children's determination and bravery to fight battle against childhood cancer. Now I, Kristi Terry, Mayor of the city of Seward, Alaska, do hereby proclaim September 25th to October 1st is Childhood Cancer Awareness Week in Seward. And I know Seward already does so much to raise money for cancer with our Polar Bear Jump, so I'm glad that we're supporting multiple facets of that fight. And now we have three, four. Clerk, he's joining me.
Good. Got a lot of reading.
I'm ready for it. These are so important, and so I'm so happy that we're able to speak to these every year because the Legion does so much to serve this community. So, whereas the unprovoked attacks of September 11th, 2020, 2001, upon America by foreign terrorists have thrust the United States and other countries into a war it never envisioned, militarily or democ... Democrat. Democratically, whereas the challenges facing all civilized people of the world as they relate to the war on terrorism will not end until those radicalized ideas are contrary to peaceful ideas of the free world, whereas America is fully committed to ensuring our freedoms remain unfettered and sovereign for all generations now and forever, and whereas world opinion needs to remain focused upon the elimination of these inhuman acts perpetrated around the globe, and whereas one way to accomplish this is to never forget that those innocent victims did not die in vain, and whereas Americans can fight back by reminding the world that deaths of these people will always be remembered, and they will be forever loved, and whereas service members and first responders from Seward and the state are honored and supported when they are called to serve and defeat inhuman acts of terrorism, and whereas a noble and appropriate way to accomplish this is through the animal celebration of life and their service, and whereas this commemoration should be conducted each September 11th throughout the land to include the promotion of global peace and goodwill, the demonstration of America's resolve and perseverance to win the war on terrorism, the advancement of responsible citizenship, the encouragement of patriotism and love of country, and the poignant remembrance of all those innocent victims who died September 11th as heroes, one and all. Now therefore, I, Kristi Terry, Mayor of the city of Seward, Alaska, do hereby issue this proclamation in remembrance of and with internal respect for those whose lives were suddenly without cause and pointlessly taken on September 11th, 2001, and further do memorialize these who served and still serve in the fight against those who had hurt and denied our freedoms and our way of life, dated this 12th day of September, 2022. And just this weekend, I met with a group of professionals, and the conversation was where we all were on September 11th when we heard that. So, I hope that, you know, for the rest of this nation's life, we always take a moment. And we'll be gone to talk about where we were when it happened, but we need to pass that on to our children, and I'll give you this and let you safety with.
Thank you. And that's what Mayor Terry was saying, so much, it's so very true, because there's so many people that are, you know, memory is perishable, and we continue to forget other things take over and everything else like this, and that's one of the reasons why we do what we do in the American nation, to keep things forward, and people's minds particularly focus on this. You know, it's particularly important, you know, for me, and many of you may not have been here last year, but when I mentioned it last year, my nephew was married on September night, and he was on his honeymoon, and both my nephews worked in the Twin Towers. One was set downtown, he was a junior kid, you know, very junior, so he was a parent boy, I'm sure, at the time, and Brian was on his honeymoon, but four people in his wedding party was killed on that day. So, it's very important that we remember that stuff, because you just never know when you're going to get hit with something along those lines. So, thank you for remembering, so thank you for putting this out.
Now, what a privilege to have all these on the same meeting, so thank you for being here. Whereas throughout American history, members of America's armed forces have made uncommon sacrifices as prisoners of war, serving our country under conditions of extreme hardship while remaining steadfast, even when their treatment violated fundamental standards of morality and international codes of conduct. Whereas 1,584 Americans are still missing from the Vietnam War, 7,555 unaccounted from the Korean War, 126 from the Cold War, and over 72,403,000 from the World War II, and thousands were recorded as unrecoverable as deep-sea losses. Whereas America's held as POWs, and America's missing in action have earned our respect for their courage and devotion to the United States. Whereas we honor our POWs who, in the act of serving our nation, relinquish their freedom to protect the liberties we enjoy, and whereas we also honor those MIAs who should not be forgotten, the pain and suffering of war that continues for the families and friends of those missing. Whereas because we must not neglect to honor the men and women who have served their country so faithfully, the United States Congress established the third Friday in the month of September as America's annual National POW/MIA Recognition Day. And now therefore, I, Kristi Terry, Mayor of the city of Seward, do hereby proclaim September 16th as POW/MIA Recognition Day, and call upon all citizens to join with Americans across the nation in honoring all present and former American POW and MIAs and their family, and their families, and call upon citizens and local officials, historians, educators, and private organizations to observe this day by flying the POW/MIA flag, the flag of hope, and by conducting appropriate ceremonies or activities in honor of those heroes. Safety with.
Same as the other one, but these people very frequently will never come back. You know, there are POWs, and a lot of these folks, you know, are probably in their 70s if they've survived that long, but their families are still in pain, and they have no answers. The League of, the American POW League of Families, families continue to push the Department of Defense throughout the government to keep her accountability and trying to stay on top of this. Two, last year, I think they recovered two out of Korea, and they actually got them from, you know, the Korean Air Peninsula there, trying to get that back to the families, and so they at least have something, whether it was DNA, whether, whatever it was, but at least the families have closure, and we still have to continue to remember that, because there's so many people, you just never know. Again, if we go into another conflict, any one of us would be, if we're going into battle or anything along those lines, we would wind up, want to know that somebody's continued to advocate for us if we were taken at any point.
Yeah, thank you. Good, this is American Legion Day. So, whereas the American Legion was chartered by Congress on September 16th, 1919, as a wartime veterans organization based on the four pillars, Veterans Affairs and Rehabilitation, National Security, Americanism, and Children and Youth, whereas over the years, the American Legion has become a preeminent community service organization with now numbers more than 2 million members, men and women, and nearly 13,000 American Legion posts worldwide, working a variety of programs that benefit our nation's veterans, service members, families, and the youth of America, and all its citizens. Whereas the Alaska American Legion has grown to be the largest and most active mayor, major veterans organization, and advocate for veterans' rights in the state of Alaska. Whereas the Alaska American Legion's current membership is over 8,000, with 35 chartered posts, including legionnaires, auxiliary members, and sons of the Legion. The American Legion serves Americans, veterans, and members of the armed forces and their families through hospital visits, financial assistance, scholarship programs, and Boys and Girls State programs, and continues to fight for the rights of veterans and the military throughout active legislation at the state and national level. Whereas a charter was issued to the originating legionnaires in Seward, establishing the American Legion Post Number Five post on December 31st, 1919. Whereas the members of American Legion Seward Post Number Five are dedicated to upholding the ideals of freedom and democracy while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. Whereas the 2022 observance of the American Legion Day provides an opportunity to recognize in our community for the many contributions to the city of Seward. Now therefore, I, Kristi Terry, Mayor of the city of Seward, Alaska, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2022, as the American Legion Day. And let me just say thank you for all you do in the community.
Oh, well, thank you. You guys support us. Thank you. The American Legion is, as Mayor Terry was saying, that we've been around here since 1919, and in various forms and various places. They originally had some stuff downtown, and I guess, as I was doing the Centennial and out, I guess, research that I was doing, I found out that Fort Am used to a lot of time burning down back in the day, and so the different places would wind up moving. So ultimately where we are now is actually an old NCO barracks from World War II, and it's been added on and a few other things along the way. But the American Legion is really proud to be able to continue to provide service to the communities, but also to those other, you know, proclamations, because we continue to, you know, to actually be able to, be able to continue to have people have increased consciousness of what is going on, whether it's, you know, 9/11, or whether it's, you know, POW MIA, those important dates. And again, you know, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, just to keep those patriotic holidays alive. And because if you don't, and I, I was reading earlier today, and this is, you know, just the last thing I'd like to say, there's two times, and I don't know if it's, it's either Egyptian, or it's Greek, or maybe some, I think it was actually somebody who was a graffiti artist in, in England, but he said that the saying is, you die twice in your life. You die once physically, but you die finally, the second time, after they forget your name and no one speaks your name. So keep that in mind because if you don't do that, all this stuff is forgotten, a lot of it. So anyway, thank you very much, Mayor Terry.
Next on the agenda is City Manager's Report, and you'll find the start of that report on page 6 of your packet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One announcement that I wanted to make was that today we received a letter stating that Don Grimes, he was a long-term financial advisor for the city, has passed away. And he was with Litch and Associates, and so we do mourn that loss. He helped us a great deal on all of our bonds and really knew the city inside and out as far as our financials.
Did we send his family or contact a friend?
We will do that. Yes, we will do that. I, I would like to have the Assistant City Manager report on the AML, the Murkowski and AML events that were held last week.
Cool. So there was a number of events going on from Tuesday through Friday last week. Doug, Norm, Jason, Rob, myself, all attended different portions of it. I guess the biggest thing is, a couple takeaways is the state is still waiting on developing, like, all the program guidance. So you turn on the news and they talk about the BIL, Bipartisan Infrastructure Law, and it sounds like this is going to immediately hit the street and there's just money falling from the sky. And it's very much turning out to be a different story where it's going to be a five-plus-year rollout of that money. And I don't think the public necessarily is hearing that enough. The second thing is D E C. Doug and Jason and I spent Friday morning, I guess, I would say, meeting with them because it was really nice to interact with their program coordinators because they are soliciting feedback from municipalities. Solbatna was there, Homer was there, a lot of other South Central communities. And so we had the opportunity to give them our thoughts, and it's really reassuring to hear that a lot of communities are in the same boat that, that Seward is with housing especially. We were talking a lot to them about utility expansion, and they're kind of stuck between federal guidance and the needs of communities, but they're really doing their best at State D E C to try and shape their programs to meet the needs of communities. So it was really, really nice to be able to go up and attend those meetings in Anchorage. And I guess the biggest takeaway is just there's more to come, and we're going to see this money kind of slowly roll out over five-plus years. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. On the next agenda, agenda, excuse me, you will see the legislative priorities for 2023, and it's intentionally coming to you earlier this year for a couple of reasons. I received a call from our lobbyist, Chris Nass, who would like, we're calling it the Governor's Special Edition, or something like that, who would like to have the priorities earlier because he intends on working with the Governor's Office as far as to see if any of the items can be put into the Governor's Budget. So, so it's coming forward earlier for that reason, and also we want to be able to prepare the legislative booklet that we did last year, and the turnaround was very tight. So we do want to have, give the printer a little more time on that. And as you know, those, that booklet that came up was very, very effective and very well liked in every place that we went, so it went over very well. I attended, well, they were attending, thank you for everyone that went, went to Juneau for the Royal Caribbean, Royal Caribbean Cruise Line event. And I received the invitation and wondering had everyone received the invitation, was there value to travel there on behalf and representing Seward? And received some information that no, that not everyone was invited. In fact, there were 50 attendees, and the City of Seward was invited on purpose and wanted the representation there. So I think Councilmember DeMoss went as well, and she'll report on it more than I, and I'll defer to her on that. But it was a very well-done event in which we were thanked repeatedly for attending on Seward's behalf, and they spoke on how much they love Seward and excited about the new projects that are going on. That's all I have unless there's, are any questions.
I have something controversial I'd like to bring up. Which we haven't spoken about this on, ahead of time, but on page seven, it has the following purchase orders between 5 and 30,000. And at one point we were told you can't list companies, and I forget the reason because I just don't even think it was a real reason. So I would like to see the companies listed because again, we had a resolution at the last meeting for, you know, $40,000 for repairs of the John Foster, and then at this meeting, I see $20,000 as a purchase order, which, you know, I would honestly like to see if we can't list companies that these are being led out to, an attorney opinion as to why not, because it really makes no sense. Everything we should be doing should be open to the public. And these are already things that have been issued, so it's not like it's proprietary information.
Right.
So that's, that's my controversial comment on the City Manager's Report. Anyone else have anything to say? Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to say that I support that as well, and I do recall back when we were told we couldn't put company names on there, and I never understood why either, so I would like to see those as well.
And you're going to argue with me?
No, I'm not going to argue with you. I'm just going to tell you what it was, was that there were security issues, they didn't want these things out in public where theft or, or impersonation, something could happen is what they were worried about. You know, they were saying we could have this reported, but that's what they, they were just concerned of, of people misusing that information.
Well, finance can come back with that reason, but I feel like that would be the same with any resolution we pass, you know, also. But I, I remember that, I just didn't think it was.
Well, I'm just, I'm just stating it as, I'm just stating it, that's all I was told, that's what we were told.
I will speak to the attorney about it and get an answer, and if it's not prohibited, the names will be listed.
So, and so just to clarify, because I was asking more questions, the repairs to that John Foster now totaled $60,000. So I was wondering what that, what company that 20,000 went to. Do we know?
That went also, that went to JAG as well.
So then, yeah. So then the, the resolution that was a substitute resolution was not exactly accurate to the entirety of the money's being spent, so I'll just leave it that. Any other comments with the City Manager's Report? Okay, thank you. Next on the attorney is the City Attorney Report, or next on the agenda is the City Attorney Report, is, oh, he is calling in, thank you. And that's to be found on page 98. Well, I guess as we're waiting for that to be included, you know, part of what's in the manager's report is the report on the community center for the public to see, and we'll have a work session on that.
I should plan on commissioning.
Brooks Chandler.
Hi, Brooks Chandler, Kristi Terry with the Seward City Council, and you are on deck for the City Attorney Report.
Very well. Good evening, everybody. This report is covering items worked on during last month, August. It was a fairly standard legal month. We did a little work on some pieces that should be coming before the council, before the end of this month. We reviewed some ordinances that are on your agenda this evening referring to Title V changes. And also, maybe the most significant work was to work with the city clerk on proposed procedures for declared writing candidates in the municipal election. And there's a typo in the report here, it's actually for the election we're having in 2022. We discovered that the existing code does not precisely address how to handle somebody that sort of comes into the office and says, I didn't make a deadline for a fine, but I want to be a write-in candidate. And I think that'll come up later in the, in the agenda, but it was, you know, elections and how they're conducted are a pretty critical thing, and the concept that we were working on is to try to sort of make the rules equal for people that do sign up in time and therefore have some requirements with APOC and things like that, and people that want to actively campaign as a write-in candidate. And so that's kind of the intent, we're trying to make the playing field equal there. Most times, I think write-ins are sort of an afterthought, but, you know, every now and then there's some of the really genuine work of the other council and just doesn't play a big deadline, for whatever reason. Other, couple of personnel matters that we never get into much with the reports, and then there was a kind of a couple of short sentences here, but fairly significant work in resolving a violation of an existing campground in the city. And it has been resolved, which is great, did not have to go to court over it, and I think that will be better for everybody. There was a lease extension at the port, I think that's United North Tours, and that is about it. I can take questions if you have any.
I do have a question. So we did adopt the write-in guidelines for candidates on the consent agenda. Now, will that be something with our codification updates that we'll include in a future city code?
Yes, we were, we both think that that should be made out of code.
Okay. Great, thank you. Any other questions for the City Attorney? Okay, thank you, we appreciate the ti, your time tonight, sir, and the report you've provided.
No problem, enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Have a good day. Do we need to?
Yeah.
Are you going to stay on, or how are we doing it?
Oh.
I had asked, I texted you and asked you if you wouldn't mind staying on for a bit, Brooks. I think if, I think we might have some legal.
With the definition.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't mind at all. In fact, what I do is operate the YouTube thing, so if you want to just, do you think it's better that I stay on the phone, or would you want to call me back later?
I would prefer you did just stay and.
Yeah, okay.
Drop off.
And that's, that's what I'll do.
Great, well, we'll know you will be listening in the background, thank you very much.
You bet.
Next on the agenda is other reports and announcements. Royal celebrity, Moro Caribbean meet and greet in Juneau for Serenade of the Seas Travel Report by Councilmember DeMoss. Councilmember DeMoss?
Yes, I joined City Manager Bauer in Juneau for a day trip to meet the new CEO and President of Royal Caribbean Group, Jason Liberty. And it was short and sweet. We had an hour and a half reception on the Serenade of the Seas, and he spoke a little bit about, he's only been the president and CEO, I think, for the last year and a half, and so he spoke a little bit about the cruise ship industry recovery from COVID and everything that's come along with that. We had the opportunity to speak with him a little bit after the reception. He spoke highly of Seward, he was really, really nice. We spoke a little bit about our relationship with the railroad and the dock expansion, so he was excited about that. That was about it. I mean, it was really fast, we went back that same night, but it was just good to see some of the same people that we see at other events and make those connections and just network a little bit. I definitely think it was worth it, it was a nice trip.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for taking time to do that. Next on the agenda is Presentations, Chamber of Commerce presentation by Executive Director Kat Sormson, and that starts on page 100 of your packet.
I got a PowerPoint this evening, I'm excited.
We'll see if it works.
If it works. Oh, Brenda, it better just work.
It's not working yet.
No, okay.
Technology's always a gamble.
Yeah. Well, I'm very excited this evening to have a little bit more time outside of the usual report that I give to give a overview of the Seward Chamber of Commerce and our role as the marketing arm of the City of Seward. We've had a marketing and economic development contract for about 30 years now, and it's been a really great relationship, I believe, for both parts, I hope you agree. And so I'll lay out some things, I'm going to look here, maybe if that doesn't work.
Your question.
Yeah, could I steal yours? Okay. Very pretty PowerPoint of lots of wonderful pictures. Cool.
Do you want color?
Hold up the color.
Yeah.
No, I'll be fine, thanks, Stephen. So just a brief overview of who we are as an organization. We are a nonprofit, oh, do I have to start the timer too? Do you want to do that? Sorry. Not that I want a time limit. We are a nonprofit organization based out of Seward, dedicated to the betterment of Seward as a business community and destination for people looking to live, work, and play. Our four core, our five words of core values are community-minded, oh yay, resourceful, transparent, nimble, and authentic, and I'm authentically excited to direct your attention up there to maybe the third slide then. So we are a nonprofit organization, but we, there's two aspects. One is we're the Chamber of Commerce, and a Chamber of Commerce is a group of businesses that support the interests of its members. A traditional, a traditional chamber uses membership fees to act as a lobbying organization, and a few of the things that we do in the community based off of our membership organizations are our luncheons, our After Five events, our newsletter, community awards, and our signature events. So this is how we kind of do networking as businesses across the community, and portraying Seward as a good destination for business. But we're a little bit different than most Chamber of Commerce's because we are a small community, we fill two roles. We're also the destination marketing organization and economic development organization for the City of Seward. And we fulfill the requirements of this through marketing, getting people to have the greatest experience they have when they come to Seward, kind of being their visitor services point of contact. And this vision has stayed true for over 30 years, for tourism of all kinds to be a vibrant, responsible component of Seward's economy and sense of place. And this contract is funded by a bed tax that was voted in 1995, which passed by a vote of 456 to 258, with the intent to provide for the promotion of tourism and development of visitor infrastructure and to provide for visitor services. In 1996, shortly after it was instated, we started a contract with the city to receive half of those funds to manage visitor services. So that's our visitor center and different things throughout town. So you can see on the next slide, a course of our funding. Over time, it's definitely grown, we receive half of the funds shown here. So you'll see the dips, the reception, ooh, reception, the recession that deep dipped for COVID, but throughout all of that, we've continued in our goal of making sure Seward is a great place to live, work, and play. Our marketing efforts attract more visitors to Seward, thus increasing the bed tax and requiring a higher investment into visitor infrastructure. Because not only do we want to get people to Seward, we want to make sure they have a great time when they're here. Our visitor center, all of the amenities we provide to visitors, of information and things like that, really help it be a more enjoyable experience. And as the Chamber of. And as the Chamber excels in the fulfillment of our marketing contract and visitor services and economic development, the city of Seward benefits. But if you look at the bigger scale of Alaska as a whole and their destination marketing organizations, we're actually pretty underfunded. We have the fifth largest visitor market in the state behind Juneau, Ketchikan, Anchorage, and Skagway, but we come in at the bottom of DMO funding. Other communities have larger bed taxes or large contracts in place that earmark more money towards their DMOs. A good example is Matsu, who budget $882,000 each year for their DMO. And they have four full-time, year-round employees, and they don't even operate a visitor center. So we receive 2% of the bed tax, 4% of the funding for 23 of the market share. And you can see on that slide the different levels and rates at other communities in Seward. So simply put, Seward outperforms many other Alaskan communities that have significantly more resources. So what do we do with all this funding? Here is an overview of everything that we do. I'm hitting my time pretty well. So we'll go into the next slide that breaks into each of these a little bit more. But this is just a brief overview. And anyone who works with me will probably say I missed something because we do do a lot. The biggest budget line item is staffing them. We have two full-time staffing. Brenda, if you want to go to the next one. There's the staff. We have two full-time staff that are funded by the destination marketing and economic development contract. And that's our visitor center and events coordinator Karen, who's responsible for all community events. But think the Fourth of July community events, like the Sawdust Pile and that stuff, organizing those things, not Mount Marathon. She's there for community events and fun stuff like that outside of our major signature events. And visitor center upkeep and organizing all visitor center information. We also have our communications coordinator, who works on blogs, social media, collecting images, all of that fun stuff. My salary and the membership coordinator's salary are not funded through the contract. Those are funded through membership and the events. We also were able to hire six part-time staff this summer. In an ideal world, we would have more. We have three spaces where they operate out of, and that's the visitor center, the derby booth, and the cruise ship terminal all summer long. They are all year-round locals in Seward community from different walks of life. And they're the best coworkers ever. I had a great summer with them. We also earmarked $25,000 towards the salary of and all of the office logistics and supplies for a full-time small business development coordinator specific to Seward. And that's in partnership with the city of Seward. And it's only been in position for about a year, but we've already seen, I think, a million dollars in capital infusion from that role. So it's been really successful in its first year. Our second biggest budget line item is visitor services. And this is greeting, giving information, and showcasing information about Seward. 150,000 people a year spend at least 15 minutes in the visitor center parking lot. Each visitor who comes in, which is significantly less than a 150,000 number, more like 45,000, 50,000, is greeted and has all of their questions answered from start to finish. We provide this service year-round to employees, we all, to visitors. We also answer hundreds of phone calls and emailing queries a month. It's insane sometimes. I've been told I'm not allowed to answer the phone anymore. We greet all of the busy cruise ships that come to port, answering all questions for people as they get off the ship and think that they can get a quick taxi ride to Anchorage and get home. We also have an auxiliary visitor center at the derby booth to be more of a presence there, since we found that it's the most visited location in Seward and a little bit harder to navigate because there's not really clear road signs. And the end more column is a plethora of things that we do. We've started doing campground online booking for the city of Seward. We provide free bathrooms right up the head of towns for the people who just can't make it to their hotel. We're a shuttle stop. We provide water for the Legion Cemetery. We're a fishing game resource. We sell state park state decals. We provide stamps for the National Park Service stamps in the winter. We are a cycling center in conjunction with Sustainable Seward. We provide free water and space for community car washes for anyone interested. We display local artists and Alaskan native history with Chugatch Mut and Kachukchik. We also provide public Wi-Fi 24/7. And we have a lost and found that we've returned like four or five cell phones to people this summer, which is really exciting. Don't take it from me, though. Go read our review some other time. I won't read them all to you today, except for the one that says I was super helpful. In the next slide, I don't know why I thought I had time to give you a two-minute video, but watch that on your free time. It was made by local Janessa Anderson to kind of show that we like to reinvest our contract funds in the city. We also have a state-of-the-art website. I would highly recommend you visit. It's a really good tool for visitors and locals alike. But it's not a small investment and takes continual improvement and updates. With that website, we've been able to have a community calendar, which is a big void that we saw in the community for a while. And our staff works tirelessly to aggregate all the events and put input them. If you go two more slides, you'll see some data analytics. Something I love about our website is people spend a long time on it. When you think about how you scroll, I usually spend about 30 seconds on a website until I find one I like, then I spend two and a half minutes. We are that quality website that people spend two and a half minutes on. And over 14,000 people a week average out visiting our website. On the next slide, we have our guides. I really hope you've all seen them. If not, please feel free to come by the Seward Chamber of Commerce. These guides are, they were at the forefront of guides, I'll say. We definitely started a trend in making a lot more visually engaging guides with less ads. And we make 80,000 of them a year, and a lot of them are used in town. We also do paid and organic media. This is our social media, printed media, and ad buys. Kind of stuff that you wouldn't necessarily see because you already are in Seward. But it definitely reaches out to some underserved markets to kind of diversify the people who come to Seward, whether they're coming up for work or vacation. Our marketing projects include expanding our marine industry, expanding our wedding and conferences. Would love a recreation center to help with that. Organizing assets, branding, the legislative priority packet that went down to Juneau and DC was using the brand that the Seward Chamber of Commerce created for our town that I hope you're all proud of because it's really like cool, aesthetically pleasing, and informative. And then we also work year-round on winter weekends to bring people from Anchorage and other places to bring some excitement to our community and also to give locals something to do all year long. Oh my gosh, I'm almost done. The next page just shows some end more. We work tirelessly with local organizations, and we aggregate lists of things to do year-round. And we work on community and visitor data. So when I bring you guys' numbers each week, it's coming from a program that we purchased so that I can understand, and we can understand as a community, what visitation is like, what the purposes are. And then our contract also includes economic development. So like I said, we have the Seward Small Business Development Coordinator house in the Chamber offices. I work really closely with PACAB and city administration. And we facilitate Startup Week and Small Business Saturday. And we attend industry shows like the Pacific Marine Expo, where we bring some vital members of the marine community down to Seattle each year to talk and network as well. And that's free of charge because we cover the booth fee. They just have to get down there with us. Did I miss anything? Okay, cool. Thank you so much. You guys have any questions or anything?
I do think it's helpful to let the public know what you do do on that contract. So that was very helpful that, to have it all outlined. Are there any questions for the chamber director?
I'm a little out of breath all of a sudden.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. There you go.
Next on the agenda are ordinance for public hearing and enactment. The first one is ordinance 2022-012. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2022-012 is amending Seward City Code, Chapter 5.01, General Provisions, and enacting Chapter 5.02, Fund Balance and Net Position. This ordinance was introduced on August 22, 2022. It is coming tonight for public hearing and enactment.
And I'll need a motion for, get that on the table.
I move for the enactment of ordinance 2022-012. One second.
I'll turn over to administration to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance came through the Carmen Jackson team and Deputy Finance Director Suri Josino. And it brings into code some current processes that have not been codified, but it is a process regarding the write-off of accounts and what is actually being done. So it recognizes that, also further defines capital assets. And then, as stated, it enacts a new chapter, Fund Balance and Net Position. And this is based on the, it provides for a really enhanced financial transparency and consistency and is, again, what is being done, but now it's in code.
I'm going to go ahead and open up public hearing. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed in to speak?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to this public hearing item? Hearing has seen none. I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions or discussion with administration or regarding this ordinance? Go ahead.
I'm just really happy to see this is codified and to see a process that is transparent and easy to follow that has been longtime needed. So thank you.
Madam Clerk, let's call for the vote, please.
Voting on the enactment of ordinance 2022-012. Calhoun?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Demos?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That ordinance has been enacted.
Excellent. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2022-013. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2022-013 is amending Seward City Code, Chapter 5.15, Investment and Collateralization of Public Funds. This ordinance was also introduced August 22, 2022. It is coming tonight for public hearing and enactment.
I need a motion in a second.
I move for the enactment of ordinance 2022-013.
One second.
Thank you. I'll turn over to administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This also, this ordinance also comes from the Carmen Jackson team and Deputy Finance Director Josino. And it, again, brings into code the practices that are being done at this time, but actually codifies them. And it provides for further employee authorizations, clarifies the investments, and updates outdated language.
Thank you. So I'm going to open up for the public hearing. Anyone wishing to, anyone signed in to speak to this?
No, ma'am.
Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance? Hearing has seen none. I'll close the public hearing. I guess my only question with these is, so when this title gets codified in its entirety, these changes will already be included, yes? And get submitted to the court for the complication, recomplication. Yes, thank you very much. Are there any questions or further discussion? Great. Madam Clerk?
Voting on the enactment of ordinance 2022-013. Casagrande?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Demos?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That ordinance has been enacted.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are resolutions requiring a public hearing. The first one is Resolution 2022-095. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 2022-095 is authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease extension amendment with T-Nite tours to extend the lease term by five years.
And I'll need a motion in a second.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2022-095.
I'll second.
And that's on a page, starting on page 139. And I'll turn over to administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council. So Connect Your Tours has requested their last five-year extension on this lease. This is the Adventure Center building, a little small cabin building down there by the harbor. So this is the last five-year extension. And it'll come back, they have all the negotiations for the next lease will have to be done all over again. And so some, not all the leases have to come before council, but this is one, I think, was a request that any extensions come back before council. They comply with all the rules in Article 2 for the option to extend. And they've been complying with everything. My recommendation is to extend their lease.
Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Has anyone signed in to speak at the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone wishing to speak at the public hearing? Now, go ahead and close. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Are there any questions or discussion? I will say, that building is very well-kept on the outside. So, you know, I'm proud to have that building in the harbor. They do an excellent job, you know, with the aesthetics on the outside of the building and keeping those improvements both inside and outside. And then the other request I would have is, you know, before this comes back in five years, that there's ample time to work with them for their next lease. Are we ready to call for a vote?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2022-095. Casagrande?
Yes.
Demos?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That resolution is there.
Next, under Resolutions Requiring Public Hearing, Resolution 2022-095?
Resolution 2022-096 is.
Oh, I'm sorry, 96. Thank you.
Recommending T-Nite Peninsula Bureau approval of the preliminary write-off way acquisition plat for the Seward Airport located in T1 North and 1 South, R1 West, Section 34, 35, 2, and 3, Seward Meridian Southwest, not point known as the Seward Airport. Physical location, 2310 Airport Road. Acquiring and replating various legals located in Section 34, 35, 2, and 3, Seward Meridian Southwest.
And I'm looking for a motion in a second.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2022-096.
I'll second.
Administration?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Vickling, may I speak to this item?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. This is, for those of you who don't know, this is Courtney Brinkhurst, our city planner, who does an amazing job supporting the community and kind of that facet. So, how about this? I'll go ahead and talk off the things, and you can fill in the gaps that I missed. Okay, good. Thanks.
Teamwork.
Yes. So this is a preliminary replat. And just for people to understand, it does not mean that this is like their, this is a common process for someone to, they're embarking on a project, to ask for preliminary replat, although they may not own all of the entire property within those bounds. And it's basically for potential project review to make sure that has the kind of the requirements that other overseeing entities. In this case, with the airport, you would have like the FAA, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Flight Board, those types of entities would want to take a look at the possibilities here and make sure that it meets the requirements before they go about doing things like even rezoning or purchasing different pieces of property that may be within that zone. And so that's, this is kind of what's before you today. A little bit of history is that this did go through planning and zoning once. And then there were some requirements put on those things, which is often the case when planning and zoning pushes something through on a replat. But the state is getting federal funding for this project. And some of those require, basically all those requirements that were put on there, and there were three of them, there were bringing utilities into the area. With that, having a fire hydrant, and then having an access, some public access to it. Those were inhibitors for the federal government to fund the state on this project because they can't have some of those pieces on there like that. So, so that's why we had to take that back to planning and zoning to have them remove those requirements so that the preliminary plat could come forward. So that way, the entities like the FAA and that kind of thing could look at approving that. So, did I miss anything?
No, we covered most of it.
Okay.
Yeah, with, along with that, the borough, so the reason why it needed to come back to planning and zoning, the borough would look to the city for acknowledgement that we had met those three requirements before the borough would approve that final plat. So planning and zoning with this resolution removed those three requirements and is now sending this, putting this resolution before you that just approves the preliminary replat, which is a right-of-way acquisition plat. And this resolution does not have any of those requirements. So that if, if you guys pass this resolution, it will then go to the borough, who will then review this preliminary replat again and have their staff look over it and all the different entities. And then it'll go back to the applicant, who will then make any necessary adjustments before the final plat is approved. So there's a lot of steps into this process before it can get finally approved.
So before we have questions and discussion, we'll open up for public hearing.
I have one person. Let's sign in, and it's Carol Griswold.
Hello, thank you. Carol Griswold, Inside City Limits. I did not find a revised preliminary plat in the package. Just the same old confusing DOT right-of-way acquisition plat documents showing parcel four and the unsubdivided remainder of private property. The private in holding was acquired in its entirety, and the new plat should show this. What exactly? What exactly is being forwarded to the borough? As noted in my email last week sent to the city clerk, there's a 10.57 acre fiber optic cable lease running through the proposed parcel five, which is not mentioned or shown on the preliminary plat. This conflict will need to be resolved before parcel five can be platted. Of interest, the 2019 assessed land value is $104,800. In addition, please note that the 23.6 acre tideland parcel for the long runway right-of-way is an easement granted by the city and retained as city property. The city should require that this easement will revert back to the city after the long runway is abandoned, and a note should be included in the preliminary plat. The 25 acre parcel five should also be retained by the city and either leased or granted a similar easement. We are giving up the council's 2021 conditions to provide public access to the beach, provide water and sewer improvements and fire hydrants. Millions of dollars of infrastructure will be serviced by tanker trucks. Businesses will continue to offer porta-potties and bottled water. Many do not even have electricity. The alternatives offered did not include collaboration with other federal and state agencies to relocate the river. This alternative and the abandonment of the long runway will result in greatly reduced aircraft safety, the loss of the U.S. Coast Guard cargo plane access, catastrophic flooding, loss of wetlands, and habitat destruction. This Seward Airport improvement project does not serve the airport users, lessees, or community. Please vote no to this flawed preliminary plat and send it back for corrections. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else signed in?
No ma'am.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Peggy Ventura, and I live outside the city, but I own property within. I don't know about anybody else here, but I picked Nogun Berries out there this spring, or this fall, with my friend. And it's a beautiful place for a lot of people to go and just appreciate Seward at its finest. On a good day or a bad day, there's always birds, and there's people out there enjoying it. And I hope that whatever you do, you allow the people of Seward to have some places to go where they can just enjoy Seward themselves and not just the cruise ship people enjoy Seward, because we need places where we can go where we can just look at the natural beauty of the place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing has seen none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back for questions and discussion. I do have a question, maybe to the city planner. So if this, if we fail this resolution, will it go to the borough regardless and take action? Like, we're just an advisory body at this level, or how does that work?
No, if you fail this resolution, it would not get forwarded to the borough.
But what does that mean for the state, though? Since the borough, this is the state that we're talking about. That would be my whole point, is that, what would happen? I mean, you know, I would love to see something work out for the people that want to access this area. I would love to see that, but if we're trying to get our airport fixed, and we don't pass this, then, I don't know. I guess I'm just trying to see if this is going to hinder the whole project, or is this just something where they're going to come in and just take it anyways, and we won't have a say anyhow? I mean, realistically.
And that might be a question for the project manager, who is available for those questions. But as far as the entirety of this project, the reason why the city council is reviewing this plat is for parcel five, which is city land, city-owned land. If it was all private land that the DOT was looking to acquire for their right-of-way, the new right-of-way, then it would just have been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and once it was approved there, be forwarded to the borough. So if this resolution wasn't approved by the city council, we cannot forward the resolution as it stands to the borough, but the DOT could come back to us with another preliminary replat for just that they need. However, they still need that southern portion for their right-of-way, so it would still interfere greatly, I think, with the project scope that they have currently. But Joy Vaughn would probably be able to answer those questions a little better.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Go ahead.
So, I've been following this throughout the years, and what we wanted was the long runway, and we were told we can't have it. We've got to extend the short runway. But there was never any talk about taking those tidelands until now. And the way I see this right here is if we subdivide or replat the tidelands that are on this picture, and there's a replat up north, that means that we have completely blocked off all of that beach. The only way that you would be able to access it would be maybe down Old Nash Road through some private land over there, but still, it's still private land. So, and then the railroad starts over, so to the citizens' comments, I mean, we're basically, by doing this, cutting off, I think the only thing that would be left is campgrounds, which you can go enjoy the beach with the motorhomes, or Diamond Dogs over where the waterfall is. And that's about all that's left of our, unless you go over to Smith. So, I personally don't support replating this, especially since I don't, I mean, I can see the triangle here, but there's no like lines or what it's worth or what's going to happen once we replat it. It does say in the resolution, the public will continue to have the right to navigate on the water and to walk on the exposed tidelands at low tide, but it doesn't say how they'd access those.
I have a question, too.
Go ahead.
Related to that, the edict was made that DOT is not allowing, or the, yeah, the DOT is not allowing access for hunting anymore, duck hunting in the areas that people duck hunt out there, which would include that. And I was told that the only way you could get there is by boat, which would mean exactly what you're saying. And if this says you could access it through the tidelands, but they're saying not so, how does this mesh with, I'm confused, I guess, because they've already cut us off, according to what they've said. So, what's this in relation to us already not being able to access around there? Does anybody have that answer? It isn't a very good question, but I can restate the question if I need to.
No, that is correct. They did purchase that other parcel that's kind of in there that people have used for duck hunting, and that's now private property, so that therefore you can't access it. And also to just, it's a tough thing, because it's been nice to have access, but I would say that access, having grown up owning property around a one ray on a farm, people don't normally have access to that type of runway, and FAA usually does not allow that type of stuff. And so we do have, it's a phenomenal place to be able to go, but I would also say it's uncommon for people to be able to access that close to a runway, unless you're a pilot or that type of thing. But to answer your question, that access, as we've been told, we can't, I mean, we're not issuing hunting permits.
Right.
And city hunting permits this year, so that access has technically been closed. And I don't, to answer whoever's question was, I don't know why they chose to not put that into this replat. Because I don't think it's technically needed for the runway space, but...
Well, I have, oh, it's kind of a transgestural question, but... So this replat doesn't negate any leases, correct? And this replat doesn't transfer any property ownership?
Correct.
So if we were retaining ownership, our parcel's just being included in a replat? And why did it need to be included in a replat?
Because it's for a potential right-of-way, for the airport right-of-way. And so it is, it's land that they need to have to, that needs to be part of their plan. I think for FAA requirements, there's a picture right here that came in there where it's got these big runouts on the, on both ends. And this is kind of, I think, is basically showing that they need part of that parcel that comes out there. But yeah, to answer your question, it does not negate any leases. It doesn't sell the property. It's just basically creating a definitive line to start having a conversation around for a project.
So then, a follow-up to that is, will they be required to come back to us for any right-of-way approval and pay us for that? Yes.
Yep, yes.
So this plat doesn't take anything off the table for any further restrictions or requirements we might put on them?
No. And if they're interested in purchasing property, that has to be done first before that plat is, like, those agreements have to be made before the plat's finalized.
And this is still going to go to the borough for their input and review, their plating?
Okay, so, yeah, just to wrap my head back around this, then, by passing this resolution, it doesn't make it that we cannot access the Nogun Berries or the duck hunting. That's already been a given by DOT, right? So this has nothing to do, I mean, these are two separate entities then, correct?
Go ahead. There's a yes and a no. Okay. Go ahead.
So, in essence, when we've had conversations with DOT about this issue, their reply has been that the access across the runway with firearms and discharging firearms in that area should never have been permitted, and they've chosen to not enforce it, essentially. Now that part of, part of the property that's been used for waterfall viewing, hunting, et cetera, used to be in private ownership, and now it's been purchased by DOT. So in essence, that whole area is now owned by the state. Their contention is that regardless of tidelands, those, the area that's been used for duck hunting, et cetera, you technically should have used watercraft to legally access that area. It's a state decision.
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
So then, if we pass this, that has no effect whatsoever on the...
Correct.
...access, because that's already been disallowed?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Just to wrap my head around what we're speaking about, that DOT has already purchased. What is DOT already purchased?
The parcel that was owned by the Lear family in the middle section there?
Not...
Between the two runways?
Correct.
It's not a city piece, it was, or the council's.
If I may. This parcel right here.
Okay.
So this is all DOT, and this section in the middle, just south of the words "eliminated VASI" and "resurrection bay." So that was privately held, and now it's been bought by the state.
Any other questions or discussion? I guess I, when we forward this or communicate back with them, I think they're doing a dismal job of communicating with the citizens of Seward and with our council. Did they attend the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting? Do we know? Or do they have the DOT?
The project manager was sick at the time, and wasn't able to present.
And again, this isn't approving anything, it's not, I mean, it's approving the plat, but that's not reinforcing the project, it's not selling any property, it doesn't negate any current leases. Any of that stuff is separate.
Madam Mayor, if I may, so, we're, we're taking, so if I remember, council meetings ago, there was a huge chunk that they proposed that we sold of like 100 and something acres of tidelands?
Twenty-five.
125 acres?
Twenty-five.
Oh, 25 acres of tidelands. Is that what this piece is, is a part of that 25 acres?
Yes.
And how big is this piece?
25 acres?
Yeah, 25 acres. It's part of like the, Seward has like the tidelands part that comes across, that's like this, if you look on the GF and the GIS, it's like this massive parcel, they need 25 acres of that tideland to kind of fill in that, and that's what they're, if you look at the list, it's parcel five. Yeah, so here...
And that's what they're peeling out regardless of us not selling it to them? So they'll have to come back with another offer?
Yeah. It says 5 acres. Or parcel 5.5 acres?
So they're including it in this plat, but it has not been purchased, and that's the reason we have to approve this plat?
So that they can purchase it?
No, so that they can replat, including that, for the project. Because they need that for the project, so they need it in the replat, but they still have to come back to us. Correct? That's what I understand.
Can I ask a quick question? I wasn't here for when they had a lot of that controversy happen with the runway. Can someone explain to me if, was that, is this a result of the community being displeased with the... Okay.
So, this is, I think this is the non-preferred Seward citizens' option, but the preferred DOT. Correct.
Right, so if I can just be really blunt, I mean, I don't know what happens if I don't approve this, but I'm not in favor of, first of all, not getting the runway that all the citizens clearly wanted. And now I'm being told, now we want 25 acres of the tidelands. It's the last access to Berries, and we're going to tell you that it's okay, you can walk across there, but there's really nothing that says it's okay that you can walk across there. And I...
I'm going to make a motion to postpone this to the next meeting with a request that they're in person to make a presentation or... I'll second, thank you. I mean, I think that if they want this, they need to come and justify why it's required. Yep. Go ahead.
May I ask this question? If they cannot attend the next meeting, would it be acceptable to that we post?
I'll put it on until a meeting that they're able to...
Okay.
Come and plead their case.
Okay.
And explain in person. Because I don't think it's fair for community development to relay their needs. They're doing an excellent job of why a replat's needed, but we're clearly asking you questions to understand the project better. So thanks, Administration, for...
It's super awkward, because it's almost we're trying to carry their water, but we don't want to be carrying their water, so...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Council for postponement. So right now, we have a motion on the floor to postpone until they're able to attend the meeting. But I do want to say with that postponement, I would like it to be held as another public hearing. Is there any objection to that? Okay. Madam Clerk, can we call for a vote on that postponement?
Voting on the motion to postpone, Demas?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you. Does anyone need a break? It's 8:30. Do we want to take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Okay, we'll just take, we'll come back at 8:35. Thank you.
I already have my coffee on my plate.
Yeah.
Mics are on, and we're almost at, oh yep, just turned 8:35, so we'll go ahead and get back on the record. Unfinished business, items for reconsideration, ordinance 2022-010, Madam Clerk? Oh, sorry.
Yes, before I, I can't read the title, actually.
Oh, you can't, oh, you can't read the title before the motion?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure, sorry about that. Ordinance 2022-010 is amending Seward City Code, Chapter 5.01, General Provisions. This ordinance was enacted on August 22nd, 2022. A request for reconsideration was filed the same evening, and that is what's before you tonight.
Thank you, and I'll need
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring ordinance 2022-010 back for reconsideration.
I'll second.
Yep, now we can debate, do you want to read off?
I just, I brought this back for reconsideration because there were a lot of comments that came in the citizens' comments that were enlightening, and it was a lot to try to make amendments on the fly, and so I wanted to be prepared, and so therefore, I am bringing this back for reconsideration for that reason.
Any other comments or discussion?
I'll just say I support the bringing it back for reconsideration, because I definitely felt like you had more to say regarding it. And there is kind of a lot to it, so I would be happy to discuss it again.
Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for a vote, and it needs four votes, because we have six, well, everything needs four votes for action, but since we have six people in attendance, we need four votes.
Correct, that would, is a vote of two-thirds, so.
And a yes vote brings it back up for reconsideration, and a no vote leaves it as is.
Correct. Voting on the motion to reconsider ordinance 2022-010, McClure?
No.
Osenga?
No.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
No.
That motion has failed.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance 2022-011, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 2022-011 is amending Seward City Code, Chapter 2.10, City Council, to integrate the rules from the City Council Rules of Procedures and to provide for clarifying amendments. And this ordinance as well was enacted on August 22nd, and then a motion, I mean, a request to reconsider was filed the following day, but in a timely manner. And that is before you now, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to bring ordinance 2022-011 back for reconsideration.
I'll second.
Thank you, and I'll need a key.
Same thing.
Any other discussion?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Voting on the motion to reconsider ordinance 2022-011, Osenga?
No.
McClure?
No.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Calhoun?
No.
Mayor Terry?
No.
That motion has failed. Both ordinances for the record will remain in their last, or enacted state.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is new business items, Resolution 2022-097.
Resolution 2022-097 is authorizing the city manager to execute Task Order 2734.26 with R&amp;M Consultants for the rezone and replat of the Forest Acres Campground and Bike Park, Lot 12A, Fort Raven Subdivision, Replant Number 1, Plant Number 87-12, physical address 911 Hemlock Avenue, in the amount not to exceed $33,985 in appropriating funds. And I'll need a motion in a second.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2022-097.
I'll second.
And I'll turn it over to administration. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Director Vickling.
Good evening again. Yeah, this is just a task order to look at, I mean, the bike park in this form is a bike park, should have probably been a rezoned park at that time. And so, but again, we kind of ran into this trouble where it is all a giant parcel with Forest Acres Campground, and so, so just looking at, we do have to divide those two into separate parcels. And I can answer questions if you have them.
So my question, so just so I'm understanding, this is just a task order to finish the plat, and then the plat, any plat in rezone will go to P&amp;Z and then come back to us?
Correct.
So this is just to start the process?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for a vote.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2022-097, Casagrande?
No.
McClure?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-101, Madam Clerk?
Resolution 2022-101 is authorizing to purchase of holiday decorations in the amount of $100,000 in appropriating funds. And I'll need a motion in a second.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2022-101.
I'll second.
Thank you, and that starts on page 587 for Agenda Statement, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Demas.
Yeah, thank you, I want to thank Councilmember Casagrande for pulling this. I was planning on doing that, because I really wanted the opportunity to just kind of discuss where this originated from, and I know there wasn't a ton of information in the Agenda Statement. So, I think it kind of began with discussions with administration and myself about the lights and the dwindling of the decorations over the last few years. And so, that, those discussions, I feel, kind of turned into, what could we potentially do more? And looking at ideas to really support economic growth in Seward. So when, well, actually, I think that our, that Jeanette's been already working with a group and kind of starting to brainstorm about some ideas and what we could potentially do. But this money isn't, I mean, a hundred grand is a lot, I'll be the first to admit that, and I'm absolutely open to talking about amending that number if that makes anyone feel more comfortable. But I absolutely want to look at, I want to make sure we're considering what the economic benefit of this is, and I know it sounds like a lot to spend $100,000 on Christmas lights, but it's more than that. It's number one, to make up for a lot of loss and unbroken equipment that hasn't been taken care of for the last few years, which is just expensive in itself, to get that good commercial-grade stuff that is going to last in Seward. And then, secondly, it's to give administration a little bit of flexibility to kind of build and start this foundation of what I think could be a really great economic benefit to Seward in the wintertime. Aside from the economic benefit, I think this is just something we could really do that would be nice for our community, and that our community could benefit from right away. I think it would improve morale, I think businesses would want to stay open. And that's not just a couple springs of lights, that's, we could really make this a destination for holidays. And people come for events, and everybody's always trying to get everybody here in the winter, but it's hard to compete with other places in the winter, it's hard to compete with Elyeska and Anchorage. But I really could see people coming here to see the lights, and go to the downtown merchants and do their holiday shopping. And this is something that the Chamber could really kind of spin off of with merchant fairs, or winter carnivals, or their winter weekends. So again, I know $100,000 is a lot, a lot of money, but I think that we have, I think it's a long time coming, I think that we've missed out on this opportunity, I think that we've neglected the decorations that we've had for a lot of years, so we have some making up to do. So, so that's my pitch. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Discussion, I'll start with Ms. Vice Mayor Calhoun.
Well, if you guys have ever noticed some of the decorating that goes on down across from the Catholic Church during the holidays, you know that we're not opposed to decorations. My, my one thing that I would like to see, because it is a lot of money at a time when we're, you know, looking at budget things and stuff, is I would actually like to see something in writing that tells me, great presentation, but that tells me physically, what is this going to provide, provide for us? You know, it's, it's a significant amount just to say we're going to get decorations, and we're going to fix it. What equipment are we fixing? What is it that we're missing that we need to have? Other than more businesses staying open in the wintertime? And this may help some of that, but I personally can't support just going, here's $100,000, go buy some lights. I would, I would prefer to see something a little more substantial in front of it that tells me exactly what that is going to bring.
Councilmember Casagrande?
If I could please make a motion to postpone this to the next meeting, to give administration some time to lay out exactly what the costs are and what the plans are.
Can I ask a question?
If you start a question, then it's just like making a second to postpone it, someone might as well have a second.
That's fine, I'll second that. I would like to ask administration what your timeframe is on purchasing decorations and having it actually done. And can I have a second question? Oh, I'm sorry. I guess my other question, my other question would be, at what amount do you even need to get approved for? So you could probably just stop purchasing stuff without our approval if necessary.
Okay, to the first question, actually, I'm sorry, could you repeat your first question? Now I'm focused on, what does the code say about purchasing?
How soon do you need to purchase?
Oh, okay, thank you.
To be able to do it this year?
Well, so, part of the reason why there isn't in there, and again, working with Councilmember DeBos, is where the purchases will come from, because we don't know at this time. There could be lights from Lowe's, there could be, you know, a commercial lighting that we will purchase, and then also having a sign built locally for, so we do have some ideas. And this came about last year at a meeting, I remember Councilmember DeBos, and there was another one, maybe it was Council, yeah, Vice Mayor McClure, talking about that we needed more lights in Seward, and more, and what we do have is what you saw last year, which is not in great shape at all. So it kind of came out of that. We started discussions early on internally, but then stalled out for a while, so then we got back at it, because it's coming. And so some of the discussions that we've had are, and ideas that we have, which I will write out, but just so you know, a large, probably eight-foot by 30-ish lit sign near Port Avenue intersection, says Happy Holidays, Season Greetings, et cetera, that would welcome visitors and set the tone as people come into town. From Fourth Avenue, from Peaking, Tillalaska, all the way down towards Railway, and also the area of the Iditarod Historic Trail, Statue of Mile Zero, and then down into the Sea Life Center parking lot, garden area with lights all down. And it would be on the posts, so there'd be big lights on the, you know, the big things on the posts, along with the lights coming down. And then a possible, we're working on a tree, so the tree that was always lit up is dying, so it can't be lit anymore. It's not safe to do so, but coming up with a tree idea, possibly maybe building a tree with a post with wires coming off, kind of like guide wires, put that on there. White lights on the boardwalk, and then it came, and then there's more, and more on the posts, on the light posts. So, again, it came across through the discussion last year at the council meeting, and then I didn't know about this place in Duluth, Minnesota, and it's called Bentleyville. If you ever get an opportunity to look at it, there's a long history about Bentleyville. I'll do the short version, there's Bentley family that used to put up decorations, lights in the city of Duluth. They had so many people going by and causing traffic issues and everything else like that, they left the city and went out into the country and did this whole great big display. Again, there were neighbors and such complaining, so then they were looking for a new place to go. The mayor of Duluth called the Bentley family and said, if we provide you the land, will you do it here in Duluth? Keep in mind, Duluth in December is cold, like, super cold, it sits on the Great Lakes. There's the Great Lake winds, 20 below, not very many people want to go to Duluth in the middle of the winter. Hundreds of thousands of people come for this light display, it's a walking light display, it's huge, miles long, not miles, acres long, I could send you a link. And so, it kind of got a little bit of a joke internally, I think some department heads were kind of, thought I was joking, but I do think that there's an economic opportunity, not to create a Bentleyville, because, you know, that's just a lot, but to bring people to Seward in the winter and to have some winter events, a tree lighting ceremony, Santa Claus, these are also things, we're thinking of tree lighting ceremony, Santa Claus, working with the Chamber for other events to make it a destination in the winter. So it's So it's come out of that, but back to your question about where we would purchase and how much, that is still really unknown. Of course, any amount that by code has to come back to council will come back to council, and I'm still trying to remember all the provisions of the code. I believe that under $30,000, that is my authority that I could do so, so I'm trying to get there. But anything over that, and do keep in mind that's one purchase, so if we purchased all lights from one place, you know, over $30,000, that would come to you, under, it wouldn't. But I don't anticipate everything coming from one place, I don't, so.
So we're speaking to the postponement? Right.
Well, like, I would, I wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was, so, if we were to postpone it till next meeting so that everybody feels a little more comfortable about it and we don't want to be Grinch's, is that going to set us, I mean, I'd like to see this all up by Thanksgiving, so could we still do that? I mean, I don't know how long it takes to...
I'm going to say I don't know, because it, you know, supplies and demand and all that.
But is two weeks going to make a break?
It may or may not. I mean, I don't know, but if it's two weeks, we'll deal with that, so.
Councilmember?
So, I was, I was going to say that I was going to vote against postponement, because I think we have an idea of what she was, they were talking about purchasing. I would say that, you know, the $100,000 might be a bit much, but I remember this town when we did it, I remember this town when we did it, and it was awesome, and I loved every minute of it. The lights on the boardwalk, probably not going to work, I wouldn't probably do that because of the way the state plows the slush and runs over onto the boardwalk.
My, my statement to the department directors is where there's a will, there's a way, and if we use commercial sealed lights and wrapped it, it won't be affected by that stuff, though.
Okay, so, okay.
So speaking to the postponement?
Right, right. So I, like I said, I would just say that knowing what we know now, that there's an idea that, and, and that, I think that once they come up with an actual, am I right, an actual purchase, they would come back to us, or no?
Over the $30,000 threshold.
It would come back to us.
If I may give an example of a cost.
Is it okay, I mean, we're off the charts anyways, if I go ahead.
Um, so, just a preliminary quote by Electric for some post stuff, I'm just going to call it, decoration garlands, mounted snowflakes, is $21,000 for the post on Fourth. So that's where it starts adding up, but...
So, are we ready to vote on the postponement, and then we'll see if there's further discussion?
Voting on the motion to postpone the resolution to the next meeting. McClure?
No.
Osenga?
No.
Calvin?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Demas?
No.
And Mayor Terry?
No.
That motion has failed. Motion to, wait a minute.
Motion to postpone failed, because it did not afford votes. I'll make a motion to change the amount in the resolution from $100,000 to $45,000 in all citations.
I'll second.
I just picked $45,000, I guess I could have picked 50, but I thought that that, you know, I think that we really haven't done any upkeep of lights. I think council's been asking previous administrations to do so, and it hasn't happened, but I also don't think we need to do all of it in one year. I mean, we can phase it out, and I think 45 is, knowing that those post lights, which are beautiful, the, the snowflakes are half of that, I think that we could do a half addition. And I think we should also call on our partners and see if there's, I'm sure there's private companies in Seward that would also join. So I feel like that would be more like seed money. That's why I just picked a number, go ahead.
And speaking on that postponement as well, I can support the $45,000 and, you know, over the next two weeks, if you start doing research and you're like, this is what else we could use to spend, I would be willing to entertain, just to get a better idea. I mean, that alone, having the $21,000 was helpful, but, yeah, and, you know, I was going to make an amendment too, to add, end events after decorations, but this is good $45,000 for lighting our holiday decorations, feels comfortable to me, for now.
So this is on the motion to amend from 100 to 45. Further discussion? Okay.
Voting on the amendment. Osenga?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Okay, that motion to amend is approved, and your main motion is passed through.
So I don't know if we have further discussion. I would like to, we'll see how well it goes, I mean, and then maybe within our budget for 2023, maybe there can be, you know, a little bit of an amount, you know, so that we can start working towards that without the sticker shock. Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just one quick thing too, because we talked about all the lights and everything going down from Peking all the way down to the rail, all of, can we not forget maybe the harbor too?
Yeah. See, when you said boardwalk, I thought you meant the harbor boardwalk, as opposed to the, because I think the harbor boardwalk would be something to look at, and, and on the light posts in the harbor, I agree with you. Go ahead. That's phase two.
They may not feel on phase two.
Let's spread the love, I think is the...
Well, if I could, I think contacting or making local businesses and other charitable organizations aware of what you're planning on doing and what the need might be is a great idea.
And I think they could be highlighted on the website or thanked in the Chamber options, I think people appreciate the opportunity. Any further discussion?
I think just like the fireworks, there's a lot of local businesses that like to get behind drives and get their name out there to be big sponsors, so, you know, maybe we could task the Chamber and do another one of those great drives so that those businesses can put their name on it.
Good stuff.
Just one comment, I just wanted to thank Jeanette for really doing the work on this and taking a few comments and complaints from us and really just kind of brainstorming and coming up with some really great ideas. And I know you have 500 more that you haven't even said tonight that are really exciting, so thank you so much.
In 10 years, the Jeanette Bauer light show. All right, Madam Clerk, if you could come for the vote, please.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 2022-101, as amended. Demas?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Casagrande?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Going through the agenda, everything has been approved on the consent agenda, down to informational items and reports, I'll just bring your attention, I did work with the Clerk's office at a request from that PACAP committee that was formed, as they're starting to go out for grant opportunities, just a letter from us supporting that endeavor. And then next on the agenda is citizen comments. Yes, ma'am. You have five minutes. Oh, I won't take that one. Still taking interest. I gotta say, I love the idea, because when I came to Seward in 95, we used to stand by the Christmas tree at the corner and we all sang, and there was the spirit of Christmas, and it was, everybody just seeing each other, it was wonderful. But last year, I couldn't even find a Christmas card in Seward to buy. I tried it, Safeway I tried, Alaska shops closed, I tried everywhere, so I finally bought a stamp book from Ranting Raven, because she had it. I couldn't find a stamp pad. I tell you, you've got to realize that if we don't do something for local people, I don't care how many visitors come here, if we can't live here, and it really was, I mean, it was, I, I kept going around to the Reiken Usits and everything else, and it's like, what are we going to do? If we can't get our tires changed in the fall, and we can't buy Christmas cards on Christmas, and we can't take our dogs and cats to veterinarian, we've got to do something for the locals too. I know it's, I, I love the idea, but I just wanted to tell you, we also have to live here, and the local people, getting them together and finding ways, I mean, I can see if you had a, I don't want to say workshop, but a gathering and saying, who wants to string these lights, there would be kids and people, and it would be fun, even if people made them at home and brought them, it could be something really special, and it wouldn't cost a lot of labor. Thanks. Thank you. Good comments, well received, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Next on the agenda is council and administrative comments in response to citizen comments. Administration?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I really don't have any comments other than thank you for a good meeting and for all of the questions, and thank you for, you guys are wonderful about contacting us ahead of time with questions too, so we can research and get you an answer, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Calvin?
No comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Casagrande?
I would first like to thank Councilmember Demas for bringing forward the resolution of supporting the Christmas lights, thank you so much. It's courageous and brave to bring forward resolutions, and so I honor that and thank you a lot. And thank you, Jeanette, for your amazing ideas as well. I'd also like to thank Sean Omen for putting his name into planning and zoning, I absolutely loved his application, for the reasons of wanting to apply is because he wanted to learn more, and he felt that there was a lot of important items before planning and zoning, and he wanted to be a part of that, so thank you for that. Also want to reiterate, in our citizens' comments at the beginning of the meeting, we were told that there's going to be a community social at the Resurrection Roadhouse, and that's tomorrow night for the recreation center. And that time is 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, I don't know if you guys heard, he was telling the audience, but he didn't say up at the podium, so it's 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM tomorrow, super important. I know, you know, a lot of times these, these studies go through a public process, and then all of a sudden, it's like, okay, and now this is what we have, and everybody goes, wait, I didn't get a chance to, you know, so it's just really important. I don't know if we can put it on the city's website to get people in there, or, I don't know the best way to get the word out. I mean, maybe if all of us tell 10 people tomorrow, that'll start something and tell 10 people to tell 10 people, but it's really, really, really important that everybody attends us, because if you don't say tomorrow what you want, it's going to be too late. And sometimes when you get these public processes, there might be a group of 20 people that know exactly what they want, and they attend all these meetings, and that's what we end up with. So it's just really important that we get that variety and diversity of everybody, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Demas?
I just have a couple things, I wanted to respond to citizen comment about the utility sale, I wanted to make sure that the public knows that this will go to the public for a vote, and so it will be up to the community, and we have discussed an advisory vote that will include potentially outside of the community as well. So those are two things that I believe are important to council and will happen, so it's up to the voters. Secondly, I have just one little thing, my niece volunteers at the animal shelter on Fridays, and I went to pick her up the other day, and at the animal shelter, Shelley had maybe like six or eight, like, little kids running around, picking up all the cats and dogs and being all crazy, and then a couple older girls volunteering, like, really helping. And I just thought that she was so great with the little kids, and, you know, sometimes little kids think they're helping and it's not, and I think that's kind of what was happening. And instead of her being annoyed, she was taking the opportunity to educate them on how to behave with the animals and how to treat them, and she didn't have to do that, and she was busy, and I'm sure understaffed and needs whatever, everything, but I just thought it was really cool, and I wanted people to know that she does that, so, that's all I have, thanks for a good meeting.
Councilmember Osenga?
I'm looking forward to some holiday decorations and lights, and be safe up there.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, well, everything's been said, but thanks to Sean Omen for stepping up to P&amp;Z, I think that's wonderful. I, yeah, I think we've got a great person in Shelley at the animal shelter, and her dad was my godfather, that's another one of those little tidbits of Seward, but also I want to give a, give a thanks to some folks, Marie Gage is one of them, and I don't know who else, but they've been taking care of Woodlawn Cemetery and doing some cleanup there and fixing up some of the, the crosses or whatever, and, and as an addendum to that, Lee Pulaski and I are going to be doing a couple of cemetery walks in October, you'll hear about it through Liberty at the, at her coffee place again, and get that all spiffed up for that, so, that's all I got. Those walks are my favorite. Our proclamation with the MOW, MIAs and the POWs, is there any way we could forward that to Senator Sullivan? He's such a huge veteran support, and just let him know that as a council, we also prioritize that and know he works hard, we know he supports that and does a lot of work for that, but our community would really like every family to have closure, so I wonder if we could forward that to him. I did want to mention that there is actually a special council meeting regarding that rec center on the 28th, so that's going to be another opportunity for people to come, and we'll probably get information from this week incorporated into that. And then the other thing is, I also had some questions on that fee schedule and don't think that those amounts are exactly right. In my opinion, it was the right thing to do to get that ordinance codified, and I think that we either need a work session or we need a lot more department, I know the department heads all saw that fee schedule, but specifically, departments should take a look at that, make comments on that fee schedule, and that should actually come back as something separate. That 30-day clock, or the clock didn't start, there's not anything that was, you know, not approved and then can't come back with any sort of clock, but we need to do a deeper dive on that, and I think instead of piecemealing our own opinions, which not, everyone here has great opinions and good input, but maybe have a work session to involve more people. Because I know the other piece of that is when Title IX comes back to us, there's a lot of tie-in that is confusing, so maybe when Title IX comes in, that's when we look at that fee schedule exactly and have that comparison, that's, I, I think that needs to come back to us and have more public comment. All right, thank you. With that, I'll adjourn at 9:07.